Let's call the meeting of Peters Township Council Board for Monday, March 28th, 2022. Move.
Ms. Shannon Peddler.
Here.
Dr. Roscoe.
Here.
Mr. Curry Willnopti here. Mr. Steigl.
Present.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Ross.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item is approval of minutes from the March 14th meeting. So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, special reports. We have one for Mr. Yon Jenkins from Peters Township Sanitary Authority.
Well, first of all, thank you all for letting me come here tonight and speak. For those of you that don't know me, I've formerly met. My name is Yon Jenkins. I'm the authority manager for the Peters Township Sanitary Authority. We manage the sanitary system on the western portion of Peters Township. We operate and own two treatment plants and a conveying system here within the township. I thought I'd like to expand upon my February 8th letter to the township regarding the rural manor residential development in Peters Township. I'm hoping you all have had a copy of that or have... If you don't, I brought copies if anyone needs it. To give you some perspective, the area we're talking about here is up on the screen now. It's a rural manor area consisting of 82 middle-class homes, approximately 1.3 miles of terracotta pipe. And the geography dictates that flow in this area for treatment by gravity all goes through Upper St. Clair to the communities north towards Pittsburgh, ultimately for disposal and treatment at the Alka-San Treatment Plant on the north side of Pittsburgh. So you can see where physically this section of Peters Township is at the top of the watershed that goes into Alka-San. After using negotiations between Alka-San and the DEP consent orders were issued to all three 83 municipalities tributary to Alka-San, the consent order is aimed at eliminating the sanitary sewer overflows and the discharge of raw sewage out of the sanitary system in the communities. The causes for the discharges are primarily due to rain and stormwater infiltration into the public sewer system through rain events and ultimately from the private side and the public side, the public and the private sewers. During the consent order negotiations, the authority, PTSA, was able to successfully negotiate with the PADEP for a corrective action plan in lieu of the more imposing and restrictive consent orders. Under the corrective action plan, PTSA is tasked with identifying and eliminating inflow and infiltration sources into the sanitary system. It's often referred to as the INI. To do so, we utilize our sewer camera to inspect all the public sewers and manholes, repairing any defects contributing to INI to the public sewer system. And you can see the yellow dots, those are the manholes in that service area, and the green lines, those are the gravity sewers. Additionally, we'll be conducting wet weather investigations during storm and rain events to identify which homes are contributing stormwater into the public sewers, utilizing our camera again to view the individual connections for the private sewers into the public sewer system. After we determine through our reports which properties are contributing excessive flows, we'll conduct dye tests on each individual property to identify the source of that infiltration, ultimately requiring repair and disconnection of any of those sources. And these typically are driveway drains, downspouts, area drains, sump pumps, and broken or cracked building sewers. On the public side, we have budgeted for repairs to the public sewers for any INI sources we identify in the main public sewer system. And this is going to primarily be lining, which is where they'll go in and they're able to insert... If there's a crack in the pipe, they're able to pull a resin sock in and inflate it, and it hardens just like plastic pipe that seals. And then the manholes, our staff or our contractors will be sealing any leaks of water coming into the system. This is also a component of our corrective action plan. We're required to use as a part of our cap. And our experience has been, we've done a couple pilot studies, that the majority of the water that comes into the sanitary system is coming on the private side. We've done a pilot study in, I believe it was in 2011, up on Friar Lane. I don't know if you were on council at that time, but we did essentially, we had Friar Lane and West Edgewood were two streets with sewers that had about the same flow coming into them, just sanitary flow. We did repairs to the one side of the street or one of the streets and used the other as a control, measured flows before and after, and the result essentially was the same. Flows when it rained, the flow still went up proportionally the same, which indicated all water was coming from the private sewers into the public sewer. My intent tonight is just really to impress upon council the financial burden that the private sewer repairs or anticipated for the rural manor will have on those homeowners. Unlike our time-of-sale dye test program where the cost for the repairs are factored into the sale of the home, these property owners are going to be required to make these unplanned and unbudgeted repairs to their building sewers. We recognize the anticipated impact, the mandated repair costs will have on the homeowners in this middle-class area of the township, and we see an opportunity to provide resource through the funds the township has received through the American Rescue Plan. And as I outlined in my February 8th letter to the township, the authority implores council to consider collaborating with PTSA to provide assistance for these anticipated and mandated private sewer repairs. The number that we backed into and that I outlined in the letter estimates approximately $200,000 would be needed to assist these homeowners. Now, I understand, and the authority understands that the township has priorities for these funds. And I don't mean to discount the projects or areas that you guys have this dedicated for, but I think it would be, this program and this source would benefit and lessen the burden on these property owners. I really feel that if we go in, we have the authority to go in under the ordinance to mandate these repairs, there's going to be a lot of heartburn, and we understand that going in, but we're required to do it through the state. I just really was looking for an opportunity that we could utilize these funds because we can't get funding to do this through one private property, but through the grant, I think we could apply it that way if the board is willing or the councils are willing to entertain that. So that being said, I'm willing to entertain any questions or concerns you may have regarding my request.
You know, do you anticipate this ever being an issue anyplace else in the township?
This is the only area that goes into Alka-San in our system. Everything else in the township comes to our sewers, comes to our treatment plant. We can make adjustments there. We can increase the capacity in our interceptor sewers. This area, we don't have any choice in. And honestly, we've argued for a long time with DEP, trying to make them understand that we don't have overflows in the rural manor area. All the overflows are downstream, but they see it as a cumulative effect, and they're pushing everyone that's connected to the Alka-San system to make these repairs.
So in other words, if these homes, their sewage was going to our treatment plants, none of this will be an issue?
No.
And to answer your question in a different way, the only time dye tests and sewers are being camered is at the time of sale. And that's the one distinction here is that people anticipate that when they go to sell their house. Most people understand that's going to occur, but you're going to, in these particular homes, you're going to look at significant expenses, and there's not necessarily a riddle readily sorts of funds to pay for this.
What was the total number of houses again, Yon?
Eighty-two.
So it's less than 2,500 a house then, if we're looking at it.
On average.
On average.
But Enoch, are you suggesting that these monies from the township would pay the entire cost?
I think we could... That was the initial thought, and I think it would need to be somewhere in between. It sounds to me, I think, a more reasonable request would be to pay a portion or a match. We could use those ones to have the property owner have some skin in the game because they are getting an improvement on their property. The thing is, it's not... They probably wouldn't be making it unless they had an issue, unless they had a backup or something. Our concern is the water coming into the system. Like, we've started our wet weather investigations during the last couple rain events, and we're seeing some of them contributing fairly significant amounts into the system.
Would there be a possibility where the township's paying a third of this, the sanitary authorities paying a third of it, and the homeowner's paying a third?
The issue I think I have with, or that we would have with it is I don't know that we can contribute funds to that out of our general budget because you're basically, it comes from our rates. It almost seems like we would be unfairly applying that to repairs. That's why I thought the opportunity through their grant was going to be a more open-ended.
The only problem that I think, at least from my perspective, is that you're taking funds that are available to everyone and designating them not only for a sanitary authority that only services a portion of the township, but for a small portion of that sanitary authority. That's why, to me, I understand the problem, and I can understand why the township might want to contribute to this, but I don't know whether it ought to be that the township's funding the entire program. And my understanding is sanitary authorities now have the ability to spend their funds on private improvements.
True, but we don't do that in other... And that would be, I guess, a flip argument, that would be, we don't do that for any time of sale, dye test?
Nor does the township.
I understand. I understand the burden.
But it's council decision.
The question is, where do you draw the line, though? You know, if you help the people in this neighborhood, not that you don't feel sorry for them, what happens, you know, somebody else in the township has a problem with their sewer line? And I mean, it goes back to what we were discussing last week. I mean, we're paying to fix drainage problems in people's backyards, so where do we draw the line?
What is the situation in Bethel Park and Upper St. Clair and all the way down through Pittsburgh relative to this? I mean, you're one tiny little component of this system.
Are they handling it?
Yeah, what's Bethel Park going to do?
That they're imposing on their property owners. We have the authority to do that. I was just trying to lessen the burden.
So the person across the street from them that lives in Bethel Park is going to have to pay the full bill?
Probably.
And because Upper St. Clair and Bethel Park and everybody else who drains in that direction, what's happening, those communities is far more onerous than what you're seeing here.
I understand that.
It's a huge expense.
The whole city of Pittsburgh is a combined sewer system, so.
So right now, if a house in that neighborhood sells, they don't have to fix that, right? This is a complete uniform fix for the entire neighborhood, right?
No, this would not apply to time of sale. Like, we have been over the years, and we've done even this year, some... The problem is not many of them's turn over. There are five or six maybe a year. So some of them in the system have already had theirs inspected by us. So hopefully, when we go through, we're not going to see water coming into the system from those homes.
So you said the average per house is around 2,500? Is that what you figured out?
That's what the math works out, yeah.
And certain houses have to pay more or less? Does it... How does that work out?
It would be dependent on the degree of the damage or the repair required. Some of them could be as simple as if they have a driveway drain tied in, they have to redirect that to the surface. Other more intrusive ones would be replacing old building sewers. We don't see that a lot in our inspections, but it's a possibility. I had backed into, I actually called a couple of contractors to find out what they charge to do. We looked at even like lining, which is less invasive, but the problem with that, they still have to dig a hole to get the liner in. But it varies based on... Some of them are a lot deeper.
Gee, as far as I'm aware, somebody's coming through driveway or something like this?
Possibly if it crosses in front or crosses in an area where it goes across their driveway.
Well, your letter reflects approximately 25% of the homes is what you estimated would potentially need to spend up to $8,000.
Based on our system-wide, we do about 450 dye tests a year. That's on average. I grouped the last 10 years, and that's seems like the failure rate.
Have you replaced the pipe, or is it what you're saying, where you go in, like, I know there's a company called Smart Pipe that starts at one end, goes another, and it pulls over to your point, seals, spans, and then just goes right through?
They can do that, and that's an available... Hopefully, unless it's a real long line or unless it goes under a driveway or something, it's usually more economical to dig it up. We do lining jobs in neighborhoods where it's in the street because it costs more. Especially if it's in the state road, we'll do a lining as opposed to actual excavation.
What's your timetable on this, Mr. Jenkins? Sorry, I shouldn't keep calling you Enoch. For those of you who don't know, Enoch's wife's my paralegal, so that's why I'm not on a first-name basis.
Well, we're finishing up... Actually, I have our corrective action thing in front of me. Timing-wise, we're going through our wet weather investigations now, so repairs more likely are going to be made end of this year into early next year. We have to go through the process of identifying the ones that... And we have to identify and coordinate with them to do a dye test on their property.
Now, if you took... If you were able to get us to agree to the township funding, would you propose putting out the bid one, contract of single company to handle all the repairs? Would you be glad to do that?
We've thought of that, yeah. Haven't worked the details out on... Because we would... Honestly, I don't think we want to be the ones coordinating the work. I think we want them to bring us a bid. We can review the bid, and then the work is on them and their contractor. It's... The contract is between them and their contractor.
It's more like the gas company with their requirements to have your line replaced.
Excuse me?
It's more like the format the gas company does relative to replacing the line in your house.
Yeah, I don't know how you could do it as a single contract because the solutions could be all over the place in terms of replacing an entire line, removing the drain, taking the downspouts out. It could be all over the place.
And part of it, too, is that you never get out from underneath it because once you're on someone's property... We've seen that with sewer projects, and we do that. We get called all the time, the grass isn't growing in this area. It's been four years it grew. And it's one way to separate the authority from the project. It's their asset. When they get their sewer line repaired, that way they take responsibility and it gets between them and their contractor. We just verify that they put it incorrectly or made the repair that we require.
Just wondering if they would really get favorable pricing knowing that township funds are going toward it and not just the property owner?
That's a good point, yeah. We typically, we tell them for their time of sale to get multiple quotes. We've seen that most of the plumbers in the area, the local plumbers that do the majority of these repairs are fair. There are some out there, but they all seem to be at least... I don't typically know the price, but when I do talk to the property owners that have issue, I ask them, and they says, "Well, I got one quote off of this contractor, and it seems really high." I said, "Well, the best thing to do is..." We have a list of contractors that are familiar with our specs, and do... We don't have any complaints with them. They do reputable work, and the township will supply that they're not recommended. They're just a list of plumbers that we put out there for them because we try not to recommend. We don't want to get in the middle of promoting local businesses on that, one plumber over another.
Well, I mean, we've helped... How many residents have we helped over the years with stormwater projects? I mean, I wouldn't have a problem helping these people. I mean, I don't think, we certainly can't foot the whole bill. I don't know what a fair number would be, and I think Gary's probably right. If Mr. Jenkins bids this out as, you know, probably property owner responsibility, the numbers will probably come back a little more favorable than they would if the bidders knew that the township's going to foot a part of the bill. So I mean, I would suggest you go and bid it out and come back to us, and we can see what we can do then. But I mean, I can...
Bid it out as one contract?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or if you think you better bid out...
I can't imagine how they're going to be able to do that.
Well, is there any... How much... How intensive would it be to get all of the lines inspected, see what's there, see what needs to be done, and then compile that into one contract? Rather than going and saying, "Hey, we're going to have all this work coming up," what, you know, give us a price, actually nail it down what the scope truly is? Well, I presume you've got to do the dye tests on all these houses.
Yeah, we have work ahead of us. That's what, we're in the process of doing that now. We need to get a good assessment. The numbers that I have, those are estimates based on system-wide tests.
See what's in... Figure out exactly what's there and then file. Exactly. I mean, you can't know what it's going to cost until you know what kind of work you got to do, right?
Correct, yeah. Or the scope of it, or I guess the scale, how many of them are going to need. Now, it is an older area, like those numbers, now that I think of it. When we dye tested Peters, at least in our sewer shed, they are all, that's all the homes. So there could be homes that are three years old, so they're all PVC pipe. You would like to think that they're all intact. This area is all older terracotta, unless they've made replacements. Like I said, we have dye tested some, and they seem to be in fairly good shape, honestly, knowing this is coming up. I like to see that we're out doing them, and honestly, when they do fail, I'm encouraged that at least we're addressing those ahead of this project, so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't understand why, if you have a list of, you know, these number of houses are going to require repairs, why you couldn't do it as one project? Now, granted, I'm not an expert on getting out projects, but...
Well, I could look at doing that. It may be complicated, but I don't know how complicated until we compile all of our data.
So I guess that's about four, then finish gathering your data. First about...
Okay. So is it safe to assume that council's at least considering?
Well, we haven't been hostile.
Why would we ask you to come here tonight? If we weren't concerned, we'd have told you not to waste your time.
All right, well, let me... It may be a while because it's going to take us a while to get through that system, but... Paul, I don't remember the timing on those funds. Paul, is that...
Nope.
Yeah?
Nope.
All right, well, then I'll report back to you when I have more information.
All right, thank you, sir.
More information, but thank you for hearing me.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right, next item is the audience comments, which is a opportunity for any member of the audience to speak to council on the non-adjournable.
Good evening, council. Ron Books, 855 Bebout Road. Tonight I have some questions. These pertain to the pool. If I'm not mistaken, last year, council made a decision regarding operating costs of the pool, and it was felt that the pool itself would have to be, would be standalone, that it would have to pay for itself from the standpoint of operating costs. My question is, if the pool is unable to sustain itself, what are the options beside closing the pool? Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
Then I'm not even sure we know that going into it whether it would be... I mean, we haven't really seen true operating costs yet.
Yeah, one of the things we're going to be doing in the near future is sitting down with two firms that have submitted proposals to manage the pool. And the basis upon which they've been asked to submit proposals is to make sure that the pool in fact pays for itself. Now, will the pool pay for itself every year? I don't think anybody can guarantee that. Are there examples of pools that do pay for themselves the bulk of the time? Yes, there are. In fact, just this week, we've got in financial reports from the Mount Lebanon Pool, and it consistently makes money. It's had a couple of years where it hasn't, and those have been offset by the years that it does, so.
Okay, thank you. Next question. As council knows, the first price for construction, the capital expense for construction of the pool was rejected by council. And administration was asked to go back and inquire as to whether or not that could be reduced. It was, but I'm told, as explained to me, I'm not sure whether it's true or not, but rumor has it that when the price was reduced, the quality of the construction and the materials was lessened in order to meet that number.
The answer to that's no.
Pardon me?
The answer to that is no.
It's no?
Yeah.
All right, very good. Thank you.
All right. So you know, I'm finished business. So we're new business. First item, we're going to need to reschedule the April 11th meeting due to a lack of a quorum on that date. So would we change the meeting date to April 18th?
Yes.
Second.
Okay. Move to second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay. Set a date for the public, for a public hearing on the zoning ordinance amendments as discussed.
Yeah, and all you're doing tonight is actually setting the date for the public hearing. Because we're moving the meeting to the 18th, there won't be one week between meetings. I don't know whether you're going to get very many people out for that zoning change, but I think if we do it on the 25th as part of the regular meeting, that agenda should be light.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Area 6 nothing. Did you set a date for the school board council joint?
Yeah. What I have in the dockets incorrect, it's going to have to be on the week before, on May, is that 17?
17.
Yeah.
16.
16, yeah, on that Monday. It's at the large group instruction room at the high school, so. So between now and then, we're setting the agenda for that. There are things that council wants included in that agenda. You just need to let me know.
All right, move, we set the date for the joint Peters Township School Board Council workshop for May 16th, 2022. So question, that's a workshop?
Yeah. It's a workshop, yeah.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. It'll start with a tour of the high school, so if anybody hasn't seen all the high school.
Anyone want to second that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Move to second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, that carries. Next item will be an award for the construction of a fire station.
What's the date?
16th.
The 2022 project includes an appropriation of $4 million for the construction of a new fire station in July of 2021. EPM estimated the cost of the project to be $3,597,000. The low bid is $3,720,000 or 3% higher than the architect's estimate. Bids were opened on the 17th, and the low bidder is TBI Construction. There is an alternate in the bid for a metal roof on the building. The architect has recommended the metal roof. I don't necessarily agree with his recommendation for a couple reasons. One, this roof that you see on this side is actually visible from the road, and the concern would, from my perspective, would be that we're trying to get a building that matches the aesthetic qualities of the homes around them, and all those homes have shingle roofs. The other thing is, as a practical matter, the roof, the asphalt roof is estimated to cost about $60,000. So you could replace this roof, you could build this building, replace this roof in 25 years, and you would still be ahead of, you know, in terms of the financial cost of doing this. And at some point in time, you will have to replace that metal roof, and based upon these bids in today's dollars, that metal roof's worth about $130-some thousand dollars. So it doesn't make sense to me to accept the alternative, but that really is up to you. One of the things, if it is a metal roof, it won't be... One of the things, if it is a metal roof, it won't be like we have on Fire Station One where it's a red metal roof that distinguishes it as a fire station. We're going to want to attempt to blend it into the, into the neighborhood so that you're talking about as a dark metal roof on that building, so.
Well, the original design had a shingle roof, didn't it?
Yeah, and this was taken, that was simply taken as an alternate. So it's my recommendation that we award a contract, a TBI contract, in the amount of $3,720,000.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second, any further discussion?
And thank you for the explanation of what the alternate was.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Area six, nothing. Had to be approved for appointment of a bond council.
So the, to be able to build the fire station, we are going to have to obtain funds through the sale of municipal bonds. And what's on the agenda tonight is the appointment of the bond council, but I want to, before we get to that, I want to begin a discussion with council and you're really going to take action at this at the next meeting. But it has, I think it's important to understand in terms of the actions that you're going to be asked to take. So there are two ways to go out and sell bonds. One is through a competitive sale and the other is through a negotiated sale. And so what, what happens in competitive sale is that you put together in essence a structure for the bond issue, you take it to an auction where underwriters bid on that day and based upon that, it determines the cost of those bonds. The rule in Peters Township has been that we use competitive sales for all new bond issues. And the reason why you want to do that is that on that given day, you know that you got the best price in the market. Where we have used negotiated sales in the past is when we're, we're refinancing to the bond issue like we did last year because now we set a target and if we, and if we can't meet the target, we don't do the sale. And that makes sense when you're trying to refinance an issue so that you can hit the targeted savings. The exception to this is, is that it's not only the characteristic, characteristics of the issuer, municipalities with bond ratings like Peters Township should favor competitive sales. And it's not even the, the bond issue, but the financial market has a lot to do with how you should approach this. And so for the first time since I've been here, it's going to be my recommendation that we use a negotiated sale to sell these bonds. The bond, municipal bond market kind of is, is reflecting what's happening inside the stock market. It is moving with fits and starts and that the way a competitive sale kind of works is you're picking a day and a time. And given the fluctuation over very short periods of time, actually sometimes daily in the bond market right now, it doesn't make sense to get ourselves locked into a competitive sale on a day. And so it's going to be my, my recommendation that in fact, we use a negotiated sale to sell these bonds. To be able to do that, you have to pick a bond underwriter. And last year, it's not been six months since we've gone through this process of advertising and taking proposals for bond underwriters. And if you recall, council used RBC as its bond underwriter on that issue. And for all the reasons that it made sense for do, for them to do that in November of last year, it makes sense for them to be our bond writer again. I have had Tim Friends, who, who is our, our municipal advisor, contact them and they're willing to hold the fees they use for that refinancing for this bond issue. We're not going to decide this tonight, but at the first meeting in April, I'm going to ask Mr. Friends to be here and have this discussion with you as well. The other thing is, right now, this bond issued just to finance what's remaining of Rolling Hill Park and for Fire Station Three needs to be slightly more than $5 million. The other thing I'm going to suggest to you is it makes sense, I think, for the township to borrow up to $10 million. And the reason I say that is you've got a couple of things that are sitting out there. You have the work on the dam, you have the Rolling Hills Aquatic Center. Either of these two projects may move forward. And the money is that you borrow now, I will guarantee you will be cheaper than the money that you'll end up borrowing next year. And so I, I think you want to keep it under 10 million because that means it's bank-qualified. It also means that you could refinance the bonds in a five-year period instead of having to wait for an eight-year period. But I think if there's any chance at all that we're going to do these other projects, we ought to consider that. If we fail to do those two projects, the one thing that's open to you at that point is in five years, you'll be able to, to buy back those bonds because the bond issue will have a call date that'll be five years out. So if we choose not to expend those funds, the worst that's happening is you're paying some interest on those, on that money that wasn't used. This is kind of hard to see, but it's in your docket. If we were to go ahead with a $10 million bond issue, the, the structure of that bond issue would look something like this. I don't think this is, I think this needs to be tweaked, but this kind of gives you an idea of what, what the township's debt service would look like out over the next 30 years, so. But the, the issue in front of you tonight is simply the appointment of a bond council. And again, last November, we took proposals, council looked at those proposals and, and based upon that, appointed Cozen O'Connor as its bond council. Jeff Mills has served as the township's bond council, not only since he's been at Cozen O'Connor, but at his, his prior law firm as well. And Jeff is prepared to hold his rate at the same rate that he did last year. And one of the things that's always true about our bond issues is our, our cost of origination are probably some of the lowest that any municipality has. So it's going to be my recommendation that council appoint Cozen O'Connor to serve as bond council.
Move we appoint Cozen O'Connor to serve as the township's bond council for a lump sum fee of $9,000. Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Area six, nothing. Next item will be an award for the paving of the parking lot of the P and B Recreation Center, which was on the Arrowhead Trail.
So the 2022 Peters Township budget includes an appropriation of $175,000 for this project. It consists of repaving the front parking lot of the community recreation center, slab repairs to the concrete walkway entrance and repaving the connector trail to Arrowhead Trail. So that yellow line is, is the trail that's going to be repaved. Bids for the project were open on March 18th. As you can see, these are the four bids that we received. Abe Liberoni's is the low bidder of $192,056.16. And while this may slightly exceed the amount of money budgeted, one thing that I'm fairly confident is that within that, the park and rec budget, we can find $17,000 to make up that difference. And it's for that reason, it's my recommendation that council award Abe Liberoni a contract in the amount of $192,056.15 for the recreation parking lot and pedestrian paving project.
I got a question on this. I guess my work, my concern, and not, not a concern, because they're all good companies, but just feels like all our eggs are in one basket with Liberoni. For the site work, you know, they seem like they get every contract. And personally, I just don't, I, I never do things that way. I like to spread it out so you work with different people. So if something would happen, you always have somebody else to, A, I don't want to say fall back on, but work with. Then two, then you judge performance. If you hire three engineering firms for three different projects, you know who's good or who's not. I just feel like, it seems like everything that's ever come in front of us has always Liberoni every time.
Well, it's not always Liberoni every time, but more, more recently, you're absolutely correct. They've been in town doing paving work and they have been the low bidder. The problem you have is that all of this is subject to the public bidding laws. And so as long as Abe Liberoni is a qualified contractor, and he is, and provides us the lowest bid on a project like this, we're required, we can use them. We can't reject them. If they're the lowest reasonable, responsible bidder by law, we have to take them. Now, what you, what you're speaking to though, is possible on professional services. So for instance, one of the things that we do is we actually go out and get proposals for engineering services for the design of projects. That we have a lot more latitude in terms of who we, we award them to because it isn't strictly based upon the lowest cost. Yeah. But as long as Abe Liberoni keeps giving you prices that are lower than other people and they, they continue to perform, you don't have a lot of discretion in terms of awarding them a contract.
And we've had the misfortune of having some poor performing contractors work for us.
Yes.
And that's certainly something that is a value not to, to have to endure.
Yes.
So in those instances, the board is allowed to reject potentially, potential lawsuit would instill that they're, should have been awarded. Or timing wise, we've in the past been able to scrap and re-bid it all.
And we've done that. When we've run into situations where we aren't comfortable with who that low bidder is, our recommendation to council is to go out to bid again. And that, you have the authority to do.
I appreciate this question, thank you.
Paul, you said that $17,000 will come from Parks and Rec. Where, where, where does that come?
I don't know that yet, but the, you know, like for instance, we're already have a savings inside a park and rec because we're down one position in that department. There are other projects, capital projects that are there that may or may not get done, so I don't know that yet. But I will guarantee you there will be $17,000 of the savings.
Is there a motion on this floor? I move that we award the contract Abe Liberoni, I can't even say his name.
Right.
Too much English in me, I guess, but.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Area six, nothing. Item G will be an award for contract for asphalt and the shekog, purchasing lines.
Yeah.
Ryan will handle it. Yeah, on, on an annual basis, Sheikah bids out commodities in the spring. For example, asphalt, limestone, storm sewer, grates and frames. Of those bids, there's really only one that we purchase in excess of $25,000 on an annual basis, and that is asphalt. The, the bid that was done by Sheikah, which they opened on March 10th, they had four different vendors for asphalt from 10 different plants provide bids. As it relates to us, there's really only two vendors and two plants we can use because of the time it takes to get the asphalt from point A to point B, keeping it warm, et cetera, et cetera. There is, it's Lehigh Hansen out of their Washington plant and Northeast Paving out of their Bridgeville plant. We've used both of these contractors now for, vendors now for, as long as I've been here and probably before that. So it's my recommendation that we accept the bids of Lehigh Hansen and Northeast Paving for the aforementioned types of bituminous surfacing materials that you see in my memo and subject to the price adjustments established in the bid specifications.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Six, nothing. Item H will be the approval of the Cox consolidation plan, Brian and Susan Cox.
So all we're doing here is taking two lots and making them one, huh?
Yeah, removing that line that you see right there on the screen.
All right, move that we approve for recording purposes. The Cox consolidation plan is shown on drawings prepared by J.R. Gales and Associates dated February 22nd, 2022 for Brian and Susan Cox, subject to the conditions recommended by the Peters Township Planning Committee.
I will second it.
Okay, motion in a second.
Silence here.
Any other discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Area six, nothing.
This is one set of plans that was easy enough to read on my little laptop.
Item I, the approval of the grainy lot consolidation plan number one for Jameson Green.
Again, what you're doing is simply removing a, a line between two existing lots.
Move we approve the grainy lot consolidation plan number one is shown on drawings prepared by Keystone Surveying and Mapping Inc. dated March 9th, 2022 for Jameson Green, subject to the conditions recommended by the Peters Township Planning Commission. Second.
Motion in a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Area six, nothing. Payroll bills.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the payroll bills. I find that it be in order, I move it be approved and submitted.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries correspondence, anything? Any reports anybody wants to discuss? Anything miscellaneous?
Yeah, a couple things. Go ahead.
My miscellaneous is to, to recognize the efforts of the Peters Township High School hockey team. And for those that don't know, they were successful and they are now state champs, so.
Yeah, we should have them in here at some point.
We can do that.
Absolutely.
And thank the police and the fire department for helping welcome her back in.
We like to do this.
You like your sirens.
Under miscellaneous, I just want you to know, we thought we had solved our problem with the building inspector. Our new building inspector has terminated his employment with the township. And I just wanted to follow up with something, a request. You know, we place banners on the bridge. The policy, and I just want to make sure given council's changed a bit, the policy has always been, we only do events. We don't do banners that say awareness kind of banners. We have a request in for someone who wants to put a banner up that simply says, this is child, child abuse prevention month or something like that. The concern has always been that if we start down that road, every week, there is somebody who has somewhere the cause that has a week. And I just want to make sure before we tell them no, that that still is the position of council, that we want to do events.
That would be my preference.
I don't think we have any, because the problem becomes.
Exactly.
One thing I wanted to bring up, kudos to Michelle and everyone at the, at the Parks and Rec for the Princess Ball went off well, went off without a hitch, so. Also, before COVID hit, I had made the request that at some point we identify the open spaces in the township where we could potentially replant with trees to take care of the damage the ash board did. We kind of forgot about that and I had kind of forgot about that when COVID hit, so I would make that request again.
We will, we will direct Mr. Girowski, who's working with the environmental quality board, to give us a report on that, okay?
Perfect. And I will, I will try to recruit the Girl Scouts then to come out and earn their badges by planting the trees, which for me will be a lot more fun than selling cookies anyway.
Any other miscellaneous items, next agenda, anything? All right, if that being the case, if we can adjourn, is there a?
Brief, exactly.
Meeting's adjourned.